Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. And, Mr. Manager, you want to go through the agenda review first?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, we'll start off with Andrew Selkton, who's the Chief Operating Officer for the Rockefeller Foundation 100 Resilient Cities. We have a tremendous kickoff tomorrow. Andrew's going to spend a little bit of time talking about that and the progress that Norfolk has had over the last couple of years. After council interest, we have two agenda items that will be on the formal docket tonight. And then Brian will give us an update with the legislative package. If you recall during the retreat, council gave us a great deal of feedback. Tonight, Brian's going to give us an overview of the next few steps. Then we have five items in closed session. A couple of them will take some time, pretty significant issues to talk about in closed session. So that's what I have for you tonight, Mayor.
All right. All right, well, Andrew, welcome. It's good to have you here. And I see you've got Amy with you. Andrew and Amy are our new best friends, by the way. They're going to help us get through this resilience, resiliency issues. And we're glad to have you here, glad that you've come down and spent some time with us, actually. I mean, we're part of, right now, a list of 66 cities in the world that the Rockefeller Foundation has staffed. We were in the first wave of 33, the first 11 of the United States. Andrew, we've developed a very nice relationship because of his willingness to partner with us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay? I sometimes disappear with microphones. Mayor, it's great to be here. Council, thank you for the opportunity. City Manager, great to see you. I guess, around the room, all these great partners that we've been working with, it's great to be back in Norfolk, as the mayor suggested. And I think, in many ways, you are our new best friend. And one of the things I want to share with you a little bit today is just how proud and excited we are to be partnering with the city of Norfolk. And if it doesn't come through loud and clear, I'll just say it up front, we are really proud of the work that you all have done for so many different reasons. And it's something, I think, we're going to get into a little bit tomorrow, but just want to throw that out there right at the start. In 2013, the Rockefeller Foundation said that they really, there's something happening with cities around the world. And the world is becoming more urban. In fact, 2013 was also the first time in our world's history that more than 50 percent of the world lived in a city. But cities are not places that are safe, right? Things are happening in cities, whether they're slow-burning disasters or big-time shocks and storms. They're happening, and they're happening with more frequency, and they're happening with greater severity. And the poor and vulnerable are often the ones who are greatly impacted by those events. And they thought, how can we best help cities? And they came up with this initiative called 100 Resilient Cities. And we were created and charged with working with 100 cities around the world to help them build their resilience. Now, when we think about resilience, it's very broad in the Rockefeller Foundation's definition. And I just want to share with the definition with you for a moment. It's the capacity of a city, so it's the individuals, the communities, the institutions, the businesses, and all the systems that make up a city. It's the ability of that city to basically continue to maintain essential services and function, no matter what type of shock or stress they face, right? So this is this idea that there's shocks and stresses that cities face all the time. And cities that are being resilient are going to be cities that are able to survive and adapt, but really, more importantly, thrive and transform themselves through these challenges. And that's this holistic view of resilience, right? It's about maintaining the physical, social, and economic functioning of the city, no matter what the city's challenge might be. So as we set on this adventure, it was really important to not just give, we wanted to help cities very directly. So we were charged with offering the cities four core services. The first core service is a chief resilience officer. So we're going to provide funding to every city in our network to hire a chief resilience officer for up to two years, or a minimum of two years. And the person that Norfolk chose is Christine Morris. I'm sure you all know her. But one of the things you should all know about Christine is she was one of the very first chief resilience officers in the world. So right now, there's over 34. And over the next year, there's probably going to be over 50. And over the next 18 months, two years, there's going to be 100. She's one of the first. And it's not only that she's one of the first, the city was one of the first cities to begin to figure out what exactly that challenge of hiring a chief resilience officer is, and figuring out how do you actually begin having a dialogue around resilience, which leads us to our second offering with cities, which is the strategic help, deliberate help with the city to help create a resilient strategy. And this is why we're here today, because tomorrow, we're going to join Norfolk in releasing the third resilient strategy in the world. So the city has had to figure out how to have really broad conversations, really important conversations, really hard conversations around this holistic view of resilience, right? But do it in a way where everyone's moving together, everyone's working together, everyone's coming together as a team around this common vision that is going to be what Norfolk is in the future. And tomorrow, that vision gets released and revealed. But it's not enough just to kind of have a vision, you have to implement that vision. And one of the things where we know will happen is your chief resilience officer here, and all the people that have been involved in this process will be a part of implementation. But we also want to be, continue our partnership. And for that, we've been working hard to find partners for cities in our network. And right now, we have over 50 different partners who are offering 70-plus different services worth over $100 million to the cities in our network. And these services include technical services that you've already been able to leverage with Palantir that have helped leverage the data that you already have, but made it much more robust and much more effective for not only doing neighborhood engagement, but also understanding the impacts of flooding in different neighborhoods at a building parcel level. Really great stuff. But the list isn't going to stop. But it's really going to be driven by the city's demand and what the city wants to do. So what we try to do is work with the city to try to understand what you're trying to do and find partners that can really help you leverage your goals. The fourth thing, and one of the things that's so critical and so amazing, is we have this great network of cities. And as the mayor said, there's about 66, 67 cities right now in the network. Soon, there'll be 100. We bring all of these cities together, first through the chief resilience officers, also through the city leaders, but also through their staff. And what they're doing is they're working together to help cities understand what the right solutions are and the right problems. All of this is to say, right, we're trying to help cities do some core things, which is effectively manage themselves in new, different ways, right? And help them scale solutions in more effective ways. And nothing makes that better than having someone who's dedicated to helping the city do things a little bit different, and having that person connected to the world, finding new solutions and different solutions. So tomorrow, we're going to celebrate, or at least honor, the release of this strategy, which is a lot of the hard work to get through around understanding risks and challenges that the city faces. But it's also this amazing statement that, at least I view it as a great statement for what the vision of where people in Norfolk want Norfolk to be in the future. And it starts to say, here are some key things that we need to do. And I know Christine will highlight a lot of that tomorrow. But what I wanted to get at is, you've already really started doing this hard work. And Norfolk has been a real leader for us. And like I said, it was, Christine was one of the first CROs hired. This is one of the first strategies. Norfolk is a real global leader in our whole network. And to give you an example in that, Norfolk has been part of the team that has been having a global dialogue on water and living with water. Just two weeks ago, Norfolk participated in a conference that was hosted by, these are all cities in our network, Rotterdam, who brought together Norfolk, Rotterdam, New Orleans, Oakland, Vallet in Denmark, Bangkok in Thailand, and Surat in India. All these cities coming together, sharing the same common problem, living with water, and what that does to your city, and how do you manage that, and how do you think about that in more proactive and productive ways. Norfolk has also been a real leader in helping to think about, how do you leverage current programs that are already underway to integrate that into your resilience thinking? I think one of the great examples of that is how the city has leveraged its, what is it, every 20 years that you go through the process of rewriting your land use codes? And Norfolk pulled together New York, New Orleans, and Boulder to have a real conversation about, what does it mean, this concept of resilience? And how does that get integrated in this concept of land use? And how do we begin to think about our city, not just how it's going to be today, but how do we begin to understand how land use impacts what our city's going to be tomorrow? Really playing a key role in that thinking has been amazing and something we've been really proud to support. But that's not all that Norfolk's been doing. And on this global scale, you also have really been real leaders. And I know you don't think this, but the work that's been happening here through your medics team and the team on neighborhood repairness, and the work that you guys are doing to make your neighborhoods ready and coordinated and cohesive, that's something that's being directly exported, as Ron Williams and I were talking last night, that Rotterdam wants to know how to do that, right? And you're sharing that information, and you're exporting your great solutions across the globe. And that's some of the things that we were hoping was going to happen when this idea started. We are hoping we are going to get people as dynamic as Christine to be chief resilience officers. We are hoping we are going to get leadership that is committed to this solution and trying to be different and using resources in new ways, as Marcus Jones and all of you have been. We are thrilled with what you've done so far. But we also recognize that this is just really the start. And I know you all know that, that resilience isn't the kind of thing you snap and it turns on. But we think the vision that you've laid out in your strategy and the work that you've done so far has laid a great foundation. And we know, and I think one of the things that I kind of feel is really great about your plan, is, you know, it's not something that government does on its own, right? Resilience isn't something that people do and kind of say, what is government doing for me? The strategy, we were doing some counting today, the strategy has three main goals supported by 12 different strategies and over 40 different initiatives, right? That's a lot. But to help do that, the strategy also specifically names over 75 different organizations in the Norfolk community, who are groups, or organizations, and nonprofits, philanthropies, academia, who have committed to being part of the solution, have committed part of their resources to getting this done. And for us, and for me, when I go back and talk to other CROs, that's what they need to do. It's not government solving the city's problems, it's the city solving the city's problems, but it's government being the leader. And for that, we're really thrilled and we're super excited. And we're really, really couldn't be more pleased with the work that you've done. And I wanted to make sure and be very clear that Norfolk is a city that has a lot going on, that you've found ways to leverage this, and it's not going unnoticed globally, and it's certainly something that we're elevating. And I want to congratulate you on these efforts, but also thank you for all the hard work that's going to come. I know there's going to be much, much more. And I look forward to being down here some other time and updating you again. But thank you for the time and the opportunity.
Andrew, thank you, and Amy for coming down and spending some time with us here in the city, and for the partnership we've developed with you and the Rockefeller Foundation.
Great, thank you.
It's been very enlightening and motivating for us. And as you can tell, the staff has really embraced it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll see you in the morning. All right, thanks. Look, we have some time limitations because of at least five closed-session items. So as far as council interest, just be, you know, cognizant of the fact that we're going to be pressed for time. Andy, anything?
I do, just very briefly, if we could. Marcus, I've received a request from a citizen. The food handler's card class is not being offered. And I know that we're dealing with the health department. It's not being offered until January. And they're looking to open a restaurant. They can't open their restaurant if he doesn't have his food handler's card. He can go to the beach, but he has to pay more money to go to the beach to do that. And it doesn't make sense that if we're trying to be business-friendly, that we're telling people, we're closed for business, or you can't open your business, or touch the food until sometime in mid-January or later. So we need to look at that. And then I need somebody to get back with me on that, because he should be able to get into a food handler's class in his own city within 30 days. You shouldn't have to wait until January. The, since we're doing resilience, there is the issue of the storm, the pump at Little Bay. And I'd like to know what's going to happen at Little Bay with the platform on Willoughby. The pump had been there, it got moved, so the pump wouldn't get destroyed during the hurricane. The question is, what are we going to do? Are we going to bring it back? And are we going to raise the platform that's there? If I can get some kind of, some feedback on that in the future. With regard to 12th View...
Turn it back.
Yeah, but are you going to raise the platform?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do you know how high you're going to go?
Yeah, we'll get it to all above.
Because everybody thinks it ended up downtown. We can't make sure, that can't happen, okay? That being said, 12th View Outfall, I know that I sent a note to Sabrina on that. If we could get an answer by Friday, I'd like something on that. So I don't want to forget that at all. Also, short-term rentals, if we can get a briefing on that in Ocean View, Willoughby, the Airbnb now, and people who can get short-term rentals. It's been a problem for them, and we need to get a little bit more cognizant of it and see if we can get a handle on that with regard to ordinance. Pretlo Library, very quickly. I understand that some of the problems that we had gotten taken care of are back. So I know that the chief has a representative here today. If we can look into what's going on there and find a solution, whether it's cameras, whether it's placing a police officer there, that would be significant, that we can get moving on that now, so Pretlo doesn't have to go through that again. Lastly, as you know, I'm a fan of the Wall Street Journal, and I'm a fan of economic development that the Wall Street Journal tells me about. Reno, Nevada, this week, started to diversify about 15 years ago, and marketing itself as a distribution center, towning its abundance of land in proximity to California and other western states. What Reno ended up doing is they brought in a, not taking any from Peter, but their economic development director came in and set out to lure new manufacturing businesses. And to do that, they decided to do whatever it takes to bring new businesses here, and including even hiring private planes to bring Tesla, they weren't going anywhere to Baltimore, but they were bringing them to them. They were bringing them to them, to bring even Tesla representatives. So I'm reading this going, you know, we can't hear anymore. Every time I find this, I'm going to always be pushing, something needs to be done, that we are looking outside to bring people in. And lastly, corporations in, and let them know that we're open for business. And lastly, with regard to development, one of the things I think we need to do is, and we really need to rework the aspect of, when somebody is looking to do development in the city, when it's economic development, we take somebody, a corporation, and we pair with an economic development officer. And it seems to move a smooth process. I have most recently run into issues where it doesn't seem to be smooth, because it's not the same philosophy. If somebody's looking to, let's say, bring in 150 apartments, the philosophy is not the same, or let's say even six homes. It's not the same as it is in economic development. And perhaps we need to look at that and sit down with planning and try to be a little bit more open in that scenario. It doesn't necessarily involve politics, but it involves a systematic approach to assist the developer to get to the end, as if we're here to help you, not here to hinder you. And I'm not saying that, don't follow rules, don't get me wrong. But if we examine things in that systematic manner, it takes the politics out of things, and it makes it the practical administrative things, and we're there to help the developer get through his development, and not there to either, you know, in the end, watch it die.
Andy, can you clarify that? So what you're saying is that when a developer comes to economic development, they get it all together and package it, but then when it goes through planning...
I wasn't even talking about going to economic development. I'm talking about when it goes to planning, that at planning, they get something similar to an economic development officer at planning, that will walk them through that scenario. And in the end, everybody's happy. Instead, it seems that they may butt heads with planning, they may butt heads with the administration. Instead, it shouldn't be that way. Either we combine it, and I like your idea, either we combine it with somebody from economic development that walks the developer through, or we combine it with somebody from planning that walks the developer through and deals with the administration issues, instead of leaving it to some political issue in the end. So it makes it a cleaner process. The developer has somebody who is there from the administration side to help move the process along to a win, because in the end, it only helps us. You know, it adjusts our taxes, and we don't have to raise anything, and we can keep our tax rate low, and it adds to our surplus. But in the end, it doesn't appear that we're functioning in the same manner as if somebody calls Peter and says, I want to expand my restaurant. And that's where I found that rub today. And I know that the vice mayor and I talked about this very recently, and it seems to be a solution that we can work through, but we've got to get there. So that's all I have right now, and thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Markley, anything?
I've had a list, but one quick thing. And I know Terry and I have been meeting with the folks around the Hague about flooding, and Andy and I have pretty much, and I know Mason Creek is the same thing. While we're looking at the universal solving with the Corps and the federal government and the state government, the flooding issues in our city, these short-term, we need to come up with short-term pictures and a way to finance them. But I know, Marcus, I've spoken to you about different ways, whether it's on wastewater bills, or on the tiffs, or whatever, but can we get some kind of timeframe where we can have alternatives that could be these three key areas? I think, the resiliency, with all that's going on, we're looking at, we're moving along, but I think we're not, we need to come up with some way for some short-term, relatively short-term, relates to these highly impacted areas. So can we...
We started, Councilman, when, I'm working on it, and I'm confident within the next month, we could come back with at least two different options that would provide some additional resources.
You were asking whether physical or dredging, or the floodgate versus what would it cost to bind them off, or what happens.
Yes.
And data that also demonstrates that this is a correct way to solve our, you know, because I don't want to throw good money too fast. So I'm hopeful that, you know, and I know you'll do that.
We've discussed this before. Part of this, there needs to be two things. One, we need to see if you put a floodgate in, does flood insurance go away? How quickly does the federal government come in and make those changes to flood maps? Does it have to have a major flood event that shows that the floodgate works before they go and reduce the people's flood insurance? And two, really, we need to put our necks out there and say if a tax increase is needed. And I've said that we need to bring stuff to the public and tell them that if we want to fix something like this, say, put a floodgate on Pretty Lake, if they're willing to pay a nickel more on their taxes if it's in a Tiff area, we have to be willing to at least go out to the public and say, this is what it's going to cost in order to do that. Well, we know it's about $100 million, you know, to fix the Hague and, I think, Pretty Lake roughly on that, and maybe Mason Creek's in there, I can't remember. But how much is that going to cost if we can't get the money from our existing budget? How do we bring that to the citizens' nest? And we have to be able to tell them that, ask them. I'm not afraid to go to a public media and say, we've got to raise taxes 10 cents if that's what it's going to cost in order to pay for this. But they need to know what the cost is to do it, so it's realistic and they understand it.
Are you talking about citywide, or are you talking about area-wide?
Area-wide, yeah.
Because I think, because I, our take is the citizens are ready, just...
Right.
Especially if it's helped with flood insurance.
If it offsets, if the increase in taxes is offset by a reduction or elimination of flood insurance, you know, or housing values increase or whatever, then I think they're willing to look at it. We just have to, somebody has to really study that and put those numbers together.
What we can't do is jam it, you know, coming in here one afternoon before the city council. We ought to have like a 2:00, you know, city council work session someday, to, you know, to spend a few hours talking about this with you, Marcus.
No, I agree, Mayor, members of council. And what's great about what Andrew said earlier is that where we were in 2012, we've evolved in outdoor processes. So I really appreciate what you said, Dr. Wibley, because we want to make sure we do something that works for the next 100 years.
Okay, was that all, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, by the end of the year, we maybe get together. We don't need many more times.
Yeah, okay. We'll schedule it an afternoon to spend some time.
I think the citizens need to know where we're...
It's time to start moving.
Terry, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do, unfortunately, but I'll make it real fast. Mr. Rix, I had emailed earlier, there's also a possibility that was brought up with this Hampton University and Old Dominion Forum last week about some short-term fixes and relatively small budget, 24 drains, it could be fixed for $1,000 each, and then maintenance for that, so we could get a response for that. Very quickly, I've got a lot of information from a number of residents about really grossly elevated water bills. Kristen's been very good about following up on some of this, but I hope we don't stop with just going out and telling them they don't have a leak. Because some of these are doubling and tripling, and so there's got to be an air. Several of them have been remediated already, but I hope we'll follow up on that. Kristen's been great on that. I would like an update on your meeting with the Dart Center. I appreciated you and Mayor meeting with Bartha and me about that, but that's important for us to find out, so what's going to happen on that. So I'll hope you'll pay for the council briefing. Denby Park meeting, the planning did a really good job with presenting that charrette last week. Many of you, I know, had to leave early, but there's some really interesting information coming out of that with the neighbors. I think if we're still, my personal opinion is, if we're still buying up properties to plan anything other than what the neighbors want, which is green space right now, we'd be foolhardy. And there's, I hope that we can sit down as a council or administration and think of some innovative ways that we could utilize this green space until we get to the point where we know how much of this property we're going to be able to buy. And then lastly, the Old Dominion area. I've voiced my frustration on this for many, many years. It's not getting any better. We've seen way too much crime. This crime is not just in areas that we traditionally have been high-risk. People are legitimately concerned about safety in the Old Dominion area. They have legitimate concerns about blight, code enforcement, parking has become a disaster, and their housing values. And I don't know that I can do this on my own, and whether we can do some kind of task force. I'm asking for your help on this. You know, two of these episodes last weekend, or weekend, I guess, before were with parties. That's got to be all over the social network. We ought to be able to identify those ahead of time. I don't know, I don't do police work, but it really, I think we're really getting to a point where we need to work together on this.
So, Dr. Wibley, I have...
Oh, I am going to give a shout-out to James, because James answers all my emails, all the pictures I send him. I send him six pictures a weekend of just neighborhoods that are just a mess, six, seven, eight cars parked on yards.
So we have been, over the course of the last two weeks, having a great deal of discussions with President Broderick and the staff about all the areas that you're talking about. And we have a plan of, a plan of action that I believe that the ODU is pleased with. We just would like to spend some more time with it before we go out into the neighborhoods with it. But we haven't gone without having these discussions.
I don't think you have time. Marcus, you've got another weekend coming up. You've got Halloween coming up. We know that it's going to be a weekend of parties at Old Dominion. I don't think we have time to wait to make sure that it gets approved by all these, they should have approved it three months ago. We can't, we can't wait. Because my son went out there one day, we're out to those areas where the parties were. He heard gunshots, he calls his, he's 22, he calls his mother. He's home from VMI. He'd never heard anything like it. He heard the evening gun at VMI. But he was shocked. And so, I don't think you've got time to wait like that, Marcus.
I guess what I'm saying, so we sat down at the table with the police chief, and President Broderick, and his COO, and with the mayor.
Marcus and I met with them Monday morning after the, after the weekend, and spent a good deal of time with them. The chief is developing a very sophisticated plan, which he, too bad he's not here, he can share it with us.
Every time that our chief?
Yes. And, and working in consultation, you know, in a very close collaboration with Old Dominion. It involved a whole range of the holistic approach, like you talked about, planning, code enforcement, all of that. And when we come out of the box, we want to make sure we do it right. And, but there'll be certainly increased, a great deal of increased enforcement over the holiday weekend.
And I think a lot of its presence, Paul, I mean, when Kathy went to get Tony that time, and, I mean, and what I hear is, is they were kids just running the street. They were just running everywhere. So there's got to be a...
I don't know where they were, but these incidents, one of them was very close to campus, but one was a considerable distance away. And of course, the terrible, I mean, the sailor getting killed. I agree, I mean, it is time to call it action.
Well, I mean, whether he brings in and goes overtime and literally shuts the neighborhood down, he shuts it down. That just can't happen. You got, if you have to have a police officer on every block, then you have a police officer on every block. I mean, to have kids running around everywhere, and what I'm talking about is that, is south of the library, and you go in a block, and they were running everywhere, and I'm talking about west of the fire station. So if that's where we're going to be, we can't be doing this.
Sure, I don't disagree, but some of that is a responsibility of students, too. So what you have is social media, and you have people coming into these parties from Roanoke, okay? Roanoke, okay? So at some point, it's a partnership between the university and the city and the neighborhood, where there's some things that you just shouldn't do. It invites issues that we shouldn't have. So we can come in and give you a full, there's some things that are happening right now that if we talk about it, doesn't help us in terms of the police work with it. So I can assure you that it is very different today than it was two weeks ago.
So then, then this weekend, we should be in a better spot. Because I can tell you, I've got a 22-year-old, and his frontal lobe is not fully formed. And if you expect those students to be able to make the appropriate decisions, it's not going to happen.
Well, the other thing, I mean, that's clear, is there's just too many, I mean, there are too many guns in the hands of people who shouldn't have guns.
I agree.
This is a national epidemic, but it is being visited upon us right now.
But I'm pleading for more than just crime.
Oh, sure.
You're right.
And you know, I think it all impacts on it.
You're right.
And when you've got the deterioration of a neighborhood, then you've got inviting crime. It's, it's a big issue and density.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can hold the landlords accountable for this?
Well, this is what we've been working with forever with Old Dominion and.
Okay, Mamie, Carrie, would you finish with that? We've got to get back to that.
Sorry.
Just a couple of tethering ordinance. I know that, Bernard, you looked into that there is a response from Cindy concerning the revision that she and the Animal Advisory Board worked on, and I just need the status for when the ordinance will reappear on the docket.
Bring that forward next month.
Okay, thank you, check. Next, my question is, do vendors have to pay for an event permit or fee for every event that they participate?
No, they don't. There is a, you mean like special events?
Yes, so, so for example, when there was the Church Street celebration and whatever vendors were there, were they required to pay the permit fee? And let's just say, how long does the permit fee last? That's the first question.
I don't, I'm not sure about what the question.
I think what you're asking, Mamie, is about the special event license that the Commissioner of Revenue issues for special events. If they, if they, if they're operating a business, they have to have a regular business license.
Right.
And then if they have, if they participate in any special event, then they have to get a special event license, and that license is good from the time that they get it through the end of the year, and it's not pro-rating.
Okay, yeah, I.
That's what you're asking about.
So it's just a one-time fee?
It's a one-time fee, but if they participate, and it's good for the end of the year, and then they can participate in any other special event in the city, yes.
So they shouldn't be charged another, another fee for a different event?
Not unless they have to pay to be in the event.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Glad to help, Marcus.
Thank you.
I have a couple, just a couple of quick things. Wait, I have to ask. I would like to know about our technology security. There have been a lot of breaches with credit card companies, with the federal government, with all this kind of stuff, and I'd like to know what we're doing as a city to make sure that we don't, I watch the CSI cyberspace, and the stuff that people can do is just downright scary, but I would really like to know how we are protected as, as a city, especially since we collect payment information online. We've got people's, you know, addresses, tax record, all that kind of stuff is all online, so I'd like to know that. And then also, our, I understand that our planning commission staff, the planning commissioners pay for lunch for their planning commission meetings, like they take turns paying for lunch. And I, I mean, I don't think that's quite fair for them to have to do that for the staff.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure. So we will look into it. I know at one point, there was a stipend that the council approved a couple of years ago.
That's for the planning commissioners, but it's not for them to turn around and pay it out for lunch.
No, yeah, I follow you. I don't know exactly. Some people wanted to turn the money back in, and I don't, I don't know what happened. We'll, we'll see what the process is.
Was the planning commissioners collectively agreed on that a couple of years ago?
Okay, when it went away from the city paying for it? Okay.
I'll give you feedback. They, they made the decision, but we'll give that to you, Captain, in writing, okay?
Okay, all right. And the last thing I just have, and it might not be a popular thing, is that we condensed our meeting schedule to two meetings a week, and I know we went to committees, and committees might actually solve this issue, but maybe we could add some time. We've got like five closed session items.
I think we just ought to start coming in at 4:00.
Yeah, I mean.
And the first thing we do is do council interest.
Yeah.
Everybody just buckle up, and we'll take the first hour.
Because.
Do the council interest, because we cannot, you know, it's.
And we, and we can just get more stuff done. I mean, less time is fine, but.
If you don't have any council interest, don't come.
Well, if you change our seating rotation and put Andy last, we may.
It might help. I mean, I just, you know, that's what we're going to have to do.
We could all, you know.
You could all make how it starts.
We could be like in a butcher shop.
I could pull numbers out of a hat. Okay, anything else?
And that's it, that's all I get.
Two things, on the council memo minutes, I made comments about stop signs on Bay, West Bay, and it was Ocean Avenue. It says West Ocean View Avenue. It's actually Ocean Avenue. Just want to make sure you got the right street. And then I also mentioned at the last meeting about a section of beach that needed to be addressed, and it's not in the memo, but we were told that there would be a meeting that Friday. I sent one of the residents to that meeting that's not a civic league person, and she sent me a very angry email asking why their section is being left out of emergency section. This is the section between, and like I said, the landmarks are not the best, Greenies and Thirsty Campbell. The houses that are there, they have rocks that have been washed down, that need to be put back, and they've lost a lot of beach. It's very close, it's right next to Ocean View Beach Park, which, you know, is, all the dune has basically gone up to the walkway. But, and I don't know if this is true, but nobody has emailed us any presentations, any information about this emergency plan. It wasn't in any of the minutes, so I don't know how to respond back to her. I couldn't make the meeting, it was 9:00 on a Friday morning, but what is being done to address that section? Anybody who goes over there can look at it and see that it needs assistance, and I don't know if it was just a mistake, but she was specifically told, or he, whoever ended up representing them, and she maybe was responding back, that it's not being handled, that that section's not being addressed. So I just, I need clarification or find out what's going on, you know, with that. I just, I know Willoughby was hit hard, and I know there are sections over at East Beach, but this particular area also was hit hard, and we need to look at addressing it.
Okay. We're still finishing the analysis. Part of the LiDAR that was done and the before and afters.
But why did they leave that meeting thinking that?
There wasn't a she there, so.
It was, it was her neighbor. She couldn't make it, but the neighbor, why did they leave thinking that it wasn't being done? That their section was being covered?
We told them, kind of surprised, we had a very cordial and good discussion about what the plan actually was, so that was not how.
I'll forward you the email from her.
What we told them was we had needed to finish the comparison with the LiDAR data to look at that, and there's also the photographic survey that we did as well, and that we needed a couple more weeks to look at where we need to add additional spots other than where we know, for example, between 12th and 13th view, that there is no protective dune or, or barrier there at all. And so that's, that's the first one, we know there's no protection whatsoever. And then we need to scale the other ones and look at that. So we haven't concluded the analysis, just for the release of the.
In the meantime, can anybody, we have our own vehicles, can they move the rocks back up against the, that fell down? I mean, is there more to it that I'm missing, or?
I don't, we'll look at that.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with that, I was there during the storm at that spot, so it really didn't change that much, but we'll, we'll, I'll find out about that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Marcus, go.
Okay, George.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I've been asked to, to go through this as quickly as possible, so I'm going to basically ignore the PowerPoints. There's two items on your agenda tonight that we wanted to talk with you very briefly about. First is the amendments to the sign ordinance. Because it is very large, very long, we wanted to essentially assure you that it makes no substantive changes to your ordinance. There was a Supreme Court decision earlier this year that, in essence, said that we cannot regulate by content, and some of our signs, our temporary signs, were in fact regulating by content, because we called them real estate signs, or we called them open house signs, or we called them other types of signs. And so the changes you have before you comply with the Supreme Court decision. They make absolutely no change whatsoever to billboards. They make no substantive change at all to permanent signage. And for temporary signage, instead of having a certain size allotment by a particular type of sign, which would be identified by content, we, in essence, applied a total sign allotment for temporary signage on a parcel. So it doesn't matter whether it's a real estate sign, or a political sign, or a sign that says it has an ADT home security system. All of those are considered to be the same, and an allotment is granted. The allotment matches that which is currently allowed if you add up the, the individual signs. We believe that this gets us to compliance in the least intrusive way with respect to signage.
So are you saying that somebody has an ADT sign, their house is for sale, and it's a political season, and they're having an open house, they've got four signs, they're out of compliance?
Probably not.
Okay.
If their house is for sale, we give them an extra allotment of sign, signage on properties that are for sale. So rather than saying you can have six square feet of real estate signage, we say that on properties that are for sale, you can have an additional allotment of, in fact, eight square feet. So we think we've got it covered. Just trying to not regulate by the content of a sign, which is what the Supreme Court says we cannot do. Second application is a rezoning request on Herbert Street. At the end of the day, the planning commission, or the planning staff's professional judgment and that of the planning commission unanimously, is that the proposal is out of character with the neighborhood, both in terms of the size of lots being proposed and the design of the houses being proposed to be constructed.
On that one, I had the pleasure of speaking with the developer and the Civic League president, and they spent an enormous amount of time working with the developer, the Civic League did, since June of this year, June, July of this year. They had several renderings with front-loading garages, recessed front-loading garages. They went door to door in that neighborhood with all the information, invited everybody back to the Civic League meeting for vote on it, and the neighborhood, the neighborhood voted that this, these were the houses out of, all of the designs, that these were the houses that they wanted. They voted that they wanted to, they knew that their neighborhood with the Cape Cod style housing was basically functionally obsolete, and they, they knew that they wanted to advance their neighborhood, they wanted their neighborhood to progress, and their goal is to draw in young families, and you're not going to get that with your traditional Cape Cod style house. There's three houses there now, I think this is proposing four houses. I disagree with the planning commission. After speaking to the Civic League president and listening to all of the work that they put in and all of the concessions that, things that they asked the developer to do that he agreed to do, I think that this particular item that comes before us, we should be approved.
Did they send a letter?
Yes, they did. They sent a letter of support.
Did the, did the planning commission see the revise, and they just thought it was inappropriate still?
Yes, sir. They believe that the, the size of lots is out of character with the existing neighborhood. It is not considered to be what's called a neighborhood in transition, so therefore that it's considered to be a stable neighborhood. And they also felt that the, the, the house designs proposed could be improved dramatically by going through the, the city's administrative design review process. However, the developer was unwilling to do so, and, and what he proposed was out of character.
The neighborhood sees themselves as a neighborhood in transition, and they see themselves as a neighborhood who wants to, to attract young families, and the style of housing is a lot, there's a lot of different architectural styles in that neighborhood. There's actually houses that are very similar to the ones proposed according to the Civic League president. I have not written out Herbert Street, but according to the Civic League president, there's houses that are very similar to the ones that are being built now, that are right across the street. Also, they felt like the scale of these houses was, was better than the scale of some of the houses, when the developers do come in and they don't have to come before us because they're not asking for a rezoning, and they're building as, as the Civic League president put it, McMansions in the neighborhood. This is not a McMansion. It's a modest-sized, single-family home that a young family will have. They didn't like the backyard having the detached garage, because they said that that would take away from yard space, and yard space was very important to them. It's also important to families who have children, for them to be able to send their kids in the backyard and have them play. So they took it, I mean, I talked to Jackie Rochelle for all of 45 minutes about every single thing that that neighborhood went through in order to come to an acceptable development of these four houses, and they were very, very pleased, and they were not happy that planning commission did not listen to them.
Why were they against having an architecture?
Because the developer didn't.
I know, but why was he against?
Because the neighborhood had already, I mean, he had shown them several.
What did he have to lose?
I don't know what he had to lose about going through design review, other than some argument about front-loading garages and not front-loading garages and all that junk.
That's a valid argument.
Well, it depends on the neighborhood.
Okay, so what, what number is that, R.1?
3, 8, okay.
Okay, what's that?
If I may, can I add one thing to the sign ordinance?
Yes, okay.
We join in George's optimism that this sign ordinance is going to be found to be in compliance with the recent Supreme Court ruling. But we were back in the Fourth Circuit. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Adam Malita for his yeoman's work on this. We were put into an emergency response in our federal court here, and within the week that was given to us, we put together a brief and prevailed there, prevailed in the Fourth Circuit, and we were pending, and the U.S. Supreme Court preparing for that, when they remanded us back to the Fourth Circuit. I join with George in recommending its passage tonight. It will help us in the event that the Fourth Circuit keeps our appeal. But I particularly wanted to thank Adam for his yeoman's work on it. He's become an expert, not only in the state, and spoke to all the local governments last week, but we're on the cutting edge of the country, and I, I join in George's optimism, but the Fourth Circuit hasn't ruled yet, so that we're still under a court's jurisdiction. But passing it tonight will help us.
Okay. Was there, did George have a third item?
No.
Okay. All right.
Ryan.
Ryan.
Thank you, Council Manager. I am again here attempting to do about 30-minute presentation in about five minutes. So we have actually talked at length at the council retreat recently here in September. This package you have before you, the administration's recommended package, is a distillation of all of the state associations that council members have been participating with all year. I also have with me a couple guests. We have Courtney Doyle, who is the Legislative Chair for Norfolk Public Schools Board. They are in 100% agreement with the education-related legislative priorities and requests contained within the recommended package. I also have Audrey Webb here, who is our Norfolk Environmental Commission Chairwoman. We also, the administration worked closely over the summer with NEC and Audrey to really get at some of the environmental-related priorities that we have listed in the recommended package. Very briefly, our highest priorities at the Commonwealth this year are flood mitigation and resiliency. We're asking for the continuation of the General Assembly Subcommittee on Recurrent Flooding to continue on with their good work, and we're also supporting what we hope will be the subcommittee's recommendation for a $3 million appropriation to advance these 3x3x3 regional studies, with the first one being Hampton Roads. Public education funding specifically is a, a high. Public education funding specifically is a highlight. It's our number-one priority in the recommended package this year, as well as state funding for local law enforcement. We're going to push as a local government association to see if we can get the state to listen to us about how important the HB 599 funding is to our local law enforcement. We've also included some discussion encouraging enhanced funds for the Housing Trust Fund, and we've worked with CSB, Sarah Page Fuller's here, to incorporate those priorities most important to the CSB as relates to mental health. And also, we are continuing, as we did with last year, to ask for some additional state resources as it relates to water, wastewater, and stormwater. On the federal side, we are continuing to encourage our congressional delegation to advocate for our progress of flood mitigation and resiliency. We again are asking for the Congress to move forward with deliberate speed to pass transportation funding bills so that we can actually get some meaningful funding in place that we can get going on some of these projects. Again, we're renewing our push for additional UAWI funds as it relates to those concerns with hosting one of the world's largest military bases, as well as the big port that's here. So we're asking for help from our federal government for those things that are over and above what your traditional police departments would be required to provide. Also, I'm excited to report, as you probably know, in total Denise Thompson actually has been leading our Brownfield remediation effort. We've identified Harbor Park as our remediation site, and through a state grant as well as a federal EPA grant, we've got $150,000 that's coming in the door to accomplish the Phase One and Phase Two there at Harbor Park. So anticipating that this work will be wrapped up in the next year or two, we are already proactively starting with engaging our, our delegation to see if they could perhaps consider being a partner with us by ramping up additional appropriations for the Brownfield Remediation Fund. This package really is about protecting, to the extent we can, existing local authorities that we have. We're asking for the General Assembly to be specifically cautious as it relates to BPO and different types of funding sources that we're requiring to, to proceed. If you can move to the next slide. Again, the, the recommended package is there, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have, but for now, our recommended timeline, key dates here, is that the council would approve for public review a draft 2016 Norfolk legislative priorities that we would post tomorrow if your desire. We will post on the city's website. We're planning to work with Communications Department to transmit a copy of the document to all the civic leagues, and I'm working with Lori on the press release to be sent to the local press so that they could know that we have the, we have the package posted and we're ready to accept comments. You have, actually, it's Councilwoman Johnson and I have the Virginia First Cities Legislative Meeting this Friday coming up to further discuss those shared urban core legislative issues. Council, we also have six of you planning to go to the VML Regional Dinner at Addex Theater that's coming up on November 12th. Thank you again for your participation. We're working diligently to encourage your fellow council members from the different areas of the city of the region to come and participate at this dinner. Your legislative dinner to discuss the city's package with our delegation is scheduled for the first, and that will occur at 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Solover Library in the sixth, sixth floor engagement room.
Say that part again, was that...
The, this is the legislative dinner with the Norfolk General Assembly delegation, and that's for the first of December. And I'll send additional notice as the date gets closer. We're waiting for the November 3rd elections to see who our delegation's going to be, and then we'll roll out a formal recommendation.
All right. When we do our legislative dinner, I know we focus on delegates or senators that actually have a piece of Norfolk, but have we ever, part of our VML conversation, opened that up for possibly other council members or other delegates to come, maybe like Ron Villanueva, who I know is possibly assisting us with transportation issues, but having them also come, even if an invitation was extended and they don't come, at least we made an attempt to involve them.
That's never been practiced before, Councilman. I hope that it gives you comfort to know that for the first year ever, your HRTPO, HRPDC, and HR TAC is actually holding an open-house meeting with the General Assembly delegation to talk about their region's priorities. It's not necessarily that it would be inappropriate first to extend that kind of invitation. As a matter of fact, some of the administration's preliminary recommended patrons are not necessarily Norfolk delegation members. So on a case-by-case basis, if there's any particular ones that you would like to extend the invitation, I'm sure that the manager would be happy for us to do that, sir.
How about the beaches legislative priorities? Do we know what they are?
Yes, sir, I have a copy of it.
Do you mind if we somehow can get a copy of that?
Send it to you.
Examine it? And I think, wouldn't that be important if we're going to advance as a region that we at least know what the neighboring cities are doing? And then maybe we can be part of their legislative priorities, they in turn can be part of ours?
Yes, sir. We try to the extent that we can to address those issues at our regional body, the HRTPO and PDC, but with the VML Regional Supper that's coming up, a lot of the ideas that were discussed at conference about these regionally-shared ideas, the hope is we could get support to get the local elected officials to attend this regional supper, to have a more robust discussion about the shared priorities for the cities. But I will absolutely send you Virginia Beach's package that they have passed.
Andy, we do work pretty closely together with Bob Mathias and the other lobbyists for the various cities in the area. We, we share a lot of common interests that we...
But we don't know, I couldn't tell you today what their priority is, Paul. I mean, I think we should know what their priorities are. They should know what ours are. We should then get together and put our priorities forward at the same time.
I didn't say we should, we wouldn't. I mean, I just said that they do work very closely together.
Oh, I know, I've met Mr. Mathias. I thought he was a very neat fellow at the VML, and, and he speaks very highly of Brian.
Yes.
I mean, I think, you know, the, but I do believe that we need to know what theirs are. If we're going to push forward, a classic example, Brian, is we have a priority that may not fit with theirs, the next thing you know, we're in conflict again. And, you know, I'm, I just think it's, it's, this is, it's a kumbaya time. It's a regional time, and we can't be going that route anymore. And so I just want to make sure that we're, we know what each other are doing, and we're not in conflict with each other. And if we can support one another, we can. Does Kay, do you have the beach too? Do you?
The beach.
You do.
Brian, we sat at a meeting in Richmond from the aide from Senator Kane. I have many gray hairs over that meeting, but she had legislation that Senator Kane was proposing. Are we, as a city, doing anything to support that? Gun registration?
I believe, yes, it had to do with gun legislation, and without further direction from the council, the administration has chosen at this time not to move forward with a recommendation for a variety of reasons, but...
What would those reasons be?
Just more guidance from the council, the will of the council. How's it going to be our will if we don't know about it?
I could guide you, tell you.
Right. Don't you think we should discuss it?
Sure. This is why we're here tonight.
Well, it's awful short notice to discuss such a topic like that.
Yeah, it really is, and...
I mean, you can't do that. It's just not right. I mean, I want to research this and come back with it. You can't do that.
We can do it next time we get together. It's not our...
It's not fair to throw that out like that.
Right. I recognize it's not our package, but I still think support would be helpful.
Yeah, and I, I mean, as a practical matter, Marcus, I think this council's going to support anything that would make common sense, gun safety legislation, you know, in its broadest, you know, broadest terms. I mean, we continually talk about the amount of gun violence in the city, so I would think we would be in close step with what Senator Kane is proposing.
Also, Councilman Priggiro, I, I do know that, I think only Virginia Beach is the only city ahead of us that all of their councils surrounding are in draft mode too, and so there isn't publication of these legislative packages, but there's regular, and I mean daily, communication with your respective liaisons trying to understand which either we're actually trying to lock in to make sure that we're, we're all following in the same direction. So I'm getting a look from the mayor that my time is up. Is there any additional questions that I could field?
Something I did want to raise, and I know this is sort of a tender space I'm moving into, but the last time that the, the city council salaries are determined by state code. And the last time that code was amended, I think it was back to maybe to, maybe 12, 13 years ago.
Wow.
And the, this is never going to impact me, so I can talk about this, okay? And so I don't, you know, I'm not bothered by it. The city, I've been reading up in Richmond where the council in Richmond, actually in July, put together a panel to, not of council members, but of citizens, to just take a look at the council pay. All of the cities, I mean, this hasn't been, the cities in Virginia, their council members are paid according to various categories of population. Richmond, for instance, has paid the same thing that we are. And so, but that, that section of the code has not been amended in well over 10, 12, this is like 12 years, and this council has not had a raise for 12 years. This happens to also coincide with an effort, the governor established an ethics commission in Richmond, which just recently reported that they thought the General Assembly ought to make more money, and it made good sense to, for them to not have to bear these hardships in order to run for elected office. In fact, the Richmond Times Dispatch this morning in an editorial editorialized in favor of increased salaries for General Assembly members, and the logic, the logic behind that would extend, you know, in lockstep with what councils are making across the Commonwealth. So it looks like the Richmond is ahead of us with this panel, which is supposedly going to bring something back to their general, to their city council in November. You know, I think it's a good idea. I'd like to reach out to the council in Richmond to see what they're really thinking about. I don't have any preconceived notion about what an increase would look like, or even if we're entitled to one, but it's something I think it's about time that somebody in the General Assembly even thought about. Of course, you would have to come back here, and then you would have to vote for something if the General Assembly even wanted to amend it, but, you know, and it's typically, these things take years to amend, quite honestly. There are counties, members of, of boards of commissioners that make more money than people, than councils that work in cities. And I'm not sure of the rationale behind that. For instance, up in, in, what's the large county in Fairfax? Fairfax County. Well, there are several of them, six or seven of the, of the counties, their accounts, their commission members make salaries that are higher than the ones in the cities. So we don't need to vote on anything like that. I'm just going to tell you, I'm going to be watching it, and I'm going to try to reach out to the commission and to the folks up in Richmond to see what the logic is, and I'll bring it back to you. Okay? I think it would be, you know, and I'm glad to go to Richmond and argue for it, actually. And so I'm going to step out in that, where angels fear the, you know, to go, but, but, I mean, I, you know, I, I think it's clear that the council doesn't make enough money, and I think we ought to be, and I think it's something we ought to consider.
Well, a couple of us are running for office, and that's the last thing that...
I know, I know. You don't have to, I mean, I know.
That's what he's doing.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't take effect in any of that, so, okay.
I have one more council concern. I apologize. There was a murder that just happened this evening in Mariners Watch Apartments, and I know Councilman Riddick brought this up at the retreat about that transition that's happened there. That was the same apartment complex in which a young woman was stabbed with her three children just the other day. And I had sent an email asking the chief for, what are we doing there? There's been more murders in that section of Ocean View than anywhere else in, in my ward. There's hardly ever homicides there, but that area in particular, I know that there's a lot of gang activity that comes out of that area as well. And I think that we need to go back and look at the property managers there and, and what's happening, and their promises that they made when they transitioned that community over, it is an income-based community, but I'm curious to see, are they providing the security that they used to provide? It is a gated community, but obviously there are some issues there, and we need JAMES in there, we need rental inspection, there's some apartments around the area. There are some very nice, traditional neighborhoods surrounding that that are suffering right now because of the crime that's coming from that area, and we've got to get in there and figure out what's going on. I mean, it's just disappointing. I just sent that email Friday about what are we doing in that area, and now there's a murder tonight on there, a stabbing.
And it's income-based, and it's gated?
It is gated.
So to wrap up, we have a, with your blessing, we will post the recommended package as council's approved draft. You have five weeks set for public comment, and we will be doing our best to market it, to encourage robust participation. Also, wanted to make sure that you're aware that it's December 8th would be the council formal session that we bring forward, the actual package for approval by council resolution, which is a requirement. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks.
Jeff?
I move the members of council assembling closed meeting on October 27, 2015 at 6:25 p.m. for the purposes set out in Clause 3 and 29, Section 2.2-3711 of the Freedom and Reform Act. And that is discussion of the acquisition of real property for public purpose in the areas of Northampton Boulevard, Wesley Drive, East Quarter River View in downtown. And in 29, discussion of the awards of public contract...
I love you all. What's the... Andy?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I can tell him.
I was thinking about...
Let's go.